Okay, well, welcome to the Bronxville zoning board meeting. I'm Stuart McIntosh. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight, and I'm joined by the following board members. You've got Jane Regan, John Brown, Greg Jackno, our newest member, he just joined us, and Mary Ellen Carpenter. Also joined by Village Superintendent Paul Tafts, sitting in the front row. And we're also joined by Village Council Jim Stout, also sitting up in the front row. So approval of a variance requires a majority vote. Tonight, all five of us will be voting, so that will require, obviously, three supporting votes for the variance. Tonight, we have just one application. It's 115 White Plains Road, and they are seeking a variance from Section 310-10D2. Side yard setback requirement is 15 feet. They're proposing a setback for a new garage of 6.1 feet. Variance requested is 8.9 feet. Okay, so let me turn it over to the applicant. Please introduce yourself, and tonight, just please make sure you speak into the mic. Paul will help with the presentation.
Is the mic on? Yes. Thank you for letting us come to present to you all. My name is Anderson Kenny. I'm the architect for my clients Ian Ross and Ashley Ross. We're talking about 115 White Plains Road. Just to give you a little bit of background about me, that I think is pertinent to this, you know, I lived about a half a mile that way for about seven years until our family got a little bit bigger and we moved to New Canaan, Connecticut. So I'm very much local. Our office is in Greenwich. While I lived here, I worked on several projects in the village. This is my sixth project in the village. I was also part of the Historical Preservation Commission, or the Historical Conservancy, where we did restoration of the red brick, of the yellow brick roads, as well as signage, the special signposts that Bronxville has. I helped design the JFK Memorial, as well as some plaques and some other things around town. So I'm fairly well-versed at the historical importance of the fabric of this village. I also lecture here and there on some of the local houses. If, Paul, could we zoom out just a little bit? Could we zoom out a little bit on the site plan? So this is the existing condition. Right now, we've got a curb cut that is very close to the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Maxheimer. This is all asphalt to a parking space that can fit, you know, this parking lot is like maybe five, six cars. And this is a ramp that actually goes down to an existing garage that is very narrow. It floods a lot, and it's really not functional as a garage, which is why previous neighbors or previous owners had actually put in this area. I know that it fits five or six cars because we're actually doing some renovations on the house now. Just to give you a little bit of context on what we're doing now, first of all, the house was built in 1915. It's had several owners, not a whole lot of deferred maintenance, but it still needed updated with electrical, plumbing, corn shell. So the Rosses have invested a lot of their time and money into making sure that all of this is brought up to code and actually functions very well and is very efficient. And I think with the new plumbing and the new electrical, it'll actually be better for the town or the village infrastructure. That being said, we're also, while we're doing the corn shell, we're very keen on maintaining the details and the level of craft and quality of the existing structure. And that is a key part of us asking for this variance. This elevation, or this rendering, shows a very sensitive design for what we're calling a carriage house that is very much in keeping with the original architecture, not only in terms of, you know, details, but also proportion, which is the reason why we've broken it down architecturally the way that we have. And I'll speak a little bit more about that later. Going back to the site plan, so the proposed site plan would have a good effect and impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is our proposed. We have got DOT approval to relocate the curb cut to this location. We're missing this really big tree. And part of the reason why we put it here is that we figured the canopy of the tree would be about this big, and we want to be outside of that canopy to protect it. You know, Department of Transportation says that when you separate driveways by, on a road that's this busy, by, you know, more than 50 feet, they like between 75 and 85 feet. We actually have this at 75 feet. That actually creates a much safer condition. Also, by relocating it here, we have less of a blind spot, which is also much safer. The existing open and permeable green space is roughly, well, not roughly, it's exactly 13,966 square feet. So on the existing open space, you know, it's roughly 14,000 square feet. We're actually going to improve that with this design by increasing the permeable green space by over 1,200 feet, square feet, so 1,236. So we're making the whole site greener. If you'll go back to the original site plan, we're also creating, by removing this asphalt, and if you'll go back to the proposed, please, a much more balanced site plan in terms of greenery, which hopefully will help, you know, in terms of views from the neighbors. The existing driveway is roughly 4,311 square feet of impervious asphalt. That's a lot. And when we combine the proposed driveway, plus the garage, plus this motor court, and I'll talk a little bit about the motor court in a minute, we have 3,244 square feet. So we've improved all of this by, you know, 1,200 square feet. The new asphalt, including the curb and this wall around the motor court, is actually 1,800 square feet. So we're actually reducing the asphalt, and this is the, you know, not such a great thing. I don't, I think we all love asphalt, but we would, we could have blessed it in our lives, but we're reducing it by almost 2,500 square feet. So all of that works to, I think, the advantage of everybody, the immediate neighbors, but also the town as a whole. We're not substantially increasing the building. By adding this, we go from 10% lot coverage to 15% lot coverage. The existing lot coverage is 2,067 square feet. By adding the garage, we bring it up to 2,836. And please note that this is all conditioned space, so it is fully attached to the house. And I'll talk about, when we get into the partie here in a minute, why it specifically should be located here. If you'll go to the renderings, please. Keep going. Thank you. So, again, going back to the architecture, you know, we really wanted to treat this in a very sensitive way. We looked very closely at all three elevations, the one that you would actually enter here, this that would be facing the road, and then the back elevation. We made sure that we found reclaimed tile, clay tile, that matches the existing from a structure that was built about the same time. We thought that we would not be able to match the existing brick, so rather than trying to do that, we matched the waddle and stop, which is this neo-Gothic kind of woodwork and stucco. So we had, you know, some special stucco samples that are made, that we actually have on the back of the house to match that. And then, of course, the proportions of the windows, you know, mimicking some of the other details here, and then the balance between the dining room, which is here, and then this addition, which we made as tight as possible. We thought that adding a motor court would be a great benefit, not only to the family, the clients, and I'll speak to the safety of that in a minute, but also to the site as a whole. This is a cobblestone motor court. It's not intended to park cars. It's strictly intended to pull in and out so that you don't have to back out of your own driveway onto White Plains Road, which during this project, I've had to do several times, and it is not fun. So it's strictly to back in and back out. We intentionally made a cobblestone set in a sand bed so that it would be semi-pervious. That's also why we separated, in that data that I mentioned before, from asphalt to the cobble. So you're getting even more, it's value-added, basically. You're getting more pervious coverage. We just, we have this low wall surrounded by hedge, and part of that is because, again, Department of Transportation did a study about the importance of children not playing in a driveway and how dangerous that could be. And there should be some sort of, if, you know, buffer between this area and this yard and White Plains Road. The clients do have a very small child, who will soon be a toddler, and having this type of buffer is, again, it's an important feature to their lifestyle. The plate here, which is actually this, where this gutter line is, is at 7 foot 10. The fence that runs along the property line is at 6 feet, according to the survey. And then this ridge is at 15 10. Part of the reason why we have the pitch of the roof here, it's to match this pitch. This is actually a much steeper pitch, as you can see, on the main part of the house. What we, what we were trying to avoid so that this would look like a seamless piece of architecture that matches the rest of the house, is having too many different pitches of roofs that made it look a little, you know, ad hoc. Can we go to the next slide, please? Unrelated to the garage, part of the renovation does include enclosing this as a solarium, but the reason why it was important for us to show this slide is that this is all of the green that we would be returning back. So right now, this is a driveway. This is a ramp. This is a parking lot. And then there are actually paths here. These steps would just come straight out to the lawn. One thing that I also want to mention, and I can talk about this with some other options that we looked at, is this area is the lowest point on the site and has had some drainage issues in the past. So by eliminating all of this driveway, we're mitigating the risk that we would have water going off to the neighbors. Can you go to the next slide? So this is our proposed, from a slightly different angle. This gray patch is the footprint of where the addition would go. We actually had that staked at the site. This red line is the end of the fence. We are 42 inches from the fence to the side of the building, so there's a, you know, roughly four feet of space between the building and the fence. And then there are another couple of feet on the other side of the existing fence. From this red line, we are 52 inches. So we're actually 52 inches or four and a half, almost four and a half feet behind where the fence ends. And the reason why that's significant, and by the way, that's, this is a different angle showing, again, that footprint. It looks a little bit janky, partly because it's a forced perspective, but, you know, that's the footprint of the addition. And this is the stake showing that corner. Can you go back to the site plan, the proposed site plan, Enrique? So just for reference, this is that stake, and the end of the fence is four and a half feet in front of that.
So just a question, so the six feet, it's, sorry, four feet to the fence and then to the property line, there's another two feet?
Another two feet. Can we go back to the other slide? I'm sorry, Enrique, go, yes. Well, actually, this is, could you zoom in on that again, like you did? Zoom in on the top? Oh, did I misspeak? I said 52, it's 58 from the existing, yeah, from 58 inches from the existing fence. The reason why this slide, I think, is important is it shows the proximity of the corner of our building to the neighbors. And there's no, you know, direct sightline. There's no, you know, area where it's covering up, you know, any of the neighbors, you know, built. Of course, you can always, you know, look at the, look at it from the oblique and, you know, and see the corner of the building, but I think that's very important, you know, for sightlines. I also think, just going back to an earlier comment, that all three of these facades become very, very important, which is why we spent so much time, you know, detailing them. Can you go down to the elevations? So these are the elevations. You know, again, I'm talking about the detail and how we're matching the roof pitch lines and then the quality of the materials. You know, it's really, we've taken a very sensitive approach, and this idea or this concept is not something that, you know, we conjured up as, you know, architects. We have a lot of precedence for that, both here in the village, but also just throughout. Can you go to the first slide, Enrique, and show the precedence? Many of you may be familiar with 31 Masterton. This is actually a project that I worked on. It has a beautiful motor court and very sensitively treats, you know, motor court or carriage in the front of the house. Yeah, thank you, that's much better. This is the front door. This is the porchette, and then this is where, you know, they turn their vehicles around, similar to what we would propose. Next is Mr. Bowman's actual house and studio on the corner of Pond Field and White Plains Road, so really just a couple of blocks from our site. You know, this beautiful motor court with, again, you know, similar vocabulary that we have looked at for our design. This is an old Brooksville, again, you know, nicely hedged, you know, walled motor court. We can come in, turn around, and exit. William Bottomley, who is a very well-known architect, similar vintage as our house, you know, again, he's got a motor court here, and then this is a side entrance with some parking.
Can I just ask you something while you're going through these? Do all of these attach to a garage nearby, or where are the garages in all these houses?
That's a great question, and they vary. So we have several that are the exact same condition that we just haven't gotten to as ours. So for this one, this is actually the garage, and unfortunately, we didn't have a better photograph of that showing the garage. For the first two that Bowman did, the garage is actually on the other side of the porchette, and I don't know that this, I don't, I don't know where the garage is here. I don't know that they have one.
They used to, but now it's a family room.
Yeah. Oh, which, which, the family room is this, and I?
No, it's actually on, it's back on the side. Because I'm just asking, as you're saying, the, where you want, this is just for turning cars around, the part you're talking about, not to leave cars in front of the houses, right? So those have to all access a garage, or would access a garage somewhere, right?
Correct. Or if they had, you know, in this case, they might have had, you know, a, this was to drop somebody off, and then they?
Yeah. Have another place to go behind the house.
Exactly. This is actually new construction in New Canaan.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
So we can keep, keep an eye on the watch here. I mean, these other locations are not Bronxville, so I'm not sure the relevance of spending time on New Canaan, Connecticut, and Greenwich, Connecticut?
Except that they're villages that have a similar fabric as Bronxville. They're maybe not as tight as Bronxville, they're not, you know, one square mile, but where this is located in New Canaan is as dense as where we are now.
Okay.
But we can move on, that's fine. I just wanted you guys to understand that this is something that's more common than not. Does that make sense? So Enrique, go into the options. You know, we wanted to avoid a variance. You know, we tried to achieve some alternates by some other methods, and they just, quite frankly, don't work. This would be an addition of a garage, same size, on the other side of the house. It would still require an variance because we would be over the setback. It also would require some sort of turnaround, and it would, in this case, would actually be in the front of the house. What we're proposing, the turnaround, would not be in the front of the house because the addition would actually be the new line for the front of the house. But most strangely, is you would actually leave the garage, walk through your formal dining, your formal living room, your foyer, before you could even get to the kitchen or the mudroom. And that's like 40 feet. And you also have to step up about three feet. With our proposal, you'd only have a grade change of about 18 inches, and you would come into the mudroom, laundry room, and it's about half the distance. Can we go to the next one? So this is the option where you would do a detached garage. This is probably the lowest point in the, on the site. We could get around the setback issue, I think, with some massaging, but you're still have a tremendous amount of asphalt. The problem with having all of this asphalt, and the reason that the existing garage keeps flooding, is because in a deluge, it creates a sheet effect with a lot of the water. It doesn't really have any place to go. I know previous owners have tried to, you know, do some drainage down here, and I don't know how successful it's been. So we wouldn't, you know, mitigate that problem at all. It would, it would be detached, which is not so great, especially when you've got an infant and you've got, you know, elderly parents. And it's also about six feet of grade difference between here and this point. And it's roughly the same distance between the option that we have here, but again, with the grade change and having to go outside to get to your garage, it just, it doesn't work for the lifestyle of our clients, and I think it would not make the village better. We also looked...
Just, just one question on that, because the setback requirement, Paul, for detachment is 10 feet, is that correct? So it looks like you've got 10 feet, except for that bottom left corner, it looks like a few inches. So in theory, presumably that, what is, I can't read that.
Nine foot five.
Okay.
We either asked for the seven inches or, you know.
All right.
Yeah.
It's minor, okay.
And then we also looked at, at the...
Excuse me. Right, a question.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, yeah. What's the grade difference between the front of the house and the back left quarter there?
What is this elevation?
Yeah.
Enrique, we have that on the proposal? What's the exact number? I know that there's, we have that in your packet.
Yeah.
We just didn't have it on this slide, and I can look that up if you, quickly, if you want. It should be on alternative option four.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't say, though.
Which should be like the last couple of three pages?
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Did you find it? Yeah, so it's five and a half feet below.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And that, and it keeps descending, so by the time you get to the corner, it may be more than that. This is just the information that we had off of the survey that we have down, that you've got here. Lastly, we did look at, or thought about somehow reusing the existing garage. It's very narrow, it's very tight. It was, you know, built in 1915 for a Model T or a carriage. It's also below grade, like I mentioned before. The ramp causes a lot of flooding in there. The clients have actually, as part of their corn shell, have gone through and done a whole mitigation for water and plan to, you know, once we fill the ramp in, you know, hopefully that problem will go away. For a single, you know, could only be used for a single car, it's not a tandem, you know, which, you know, for the most part, I think it's reasonable that almost everybody in Bronxville has more than one car. And in order to do a tandem would mean that we'd have to rework the driveway and put in so much more asphalt and so much more turnaround space that most likely we would, you know, make an existing problem... you know, make a, an existing problem much worse. So, you know, in closing, we hope we've made a reasonable argument. I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got, or any other.
Could you talk about, because in the package was option two, alternative, alternative two?
Let me just get to it. So, alternative two, we decided not to show in these slides because there were several reasons. One, being the path of travel would go from forty feet to like sixty feet, and the other is that you're not making the condition of going through your formal dining room, or your formal living room, or your foyer, any different. I mean, that's, you know, that's the real key there, right? I mean, it's one of them, you know? I mean, I, I've never seen a, you know, in twenty-three years practicing architecture, I've never seen a garage where you walk through your formal dining room and your formal living room to get to your mudroom.
But theoretically, you could probably create a mudroom off that garage, correct?
I, I, I mean, I guess theoretically you could. I guess my question is, you still have to come out of the mudroom into your dining room.
And it looks like it's also very close to meeting the setback requirement, right?
Correct.
It's just a couple, it's a couple of inches, okay.
Correct. I mean, you know, we, we could massage that, but.
Okay. Nope. Jane, you got any questions?
Um.
Okay, because, uh, okay, why don't we, Anderson, you're done with your presentation?
Unless you have, you know, any other questions. I mean, we did.
I do have one, one, one question. Is the height of the garage, as I recall, is tied somewhat to that front piece that faces the street?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that? What are some alternatives with that?
Enrique, can you go to revised elevation? Should be one of the last slides.
And also, within the context of garage heights, this height I'm talking.
Correct.
Talking about.
Fifteen.
It's a fifteen?
Ten.
Fifteen-ten.
Right, it's fifteen-ten. So we did an elevation where we changed the pitch of the roof, and brought that down another couple of feet. We've got some dimensions on there as well. We left the plate height at seven foot-ten, just because if you go lower than that, then, you know, you run into some problems, especially with, you know, cars nowadays are much higher. You having trouble finding it? Nope, that's existing, or that's the proposed. It's part of the new slides. I have hard copies. So what we did was lowered the ridge to twelve-eleven and three-quarters, left the plate as is. Basically, the, this ridge and this ridge were the line, such a pitch.
The top of the front door, you mean? The top?
What's that?
The top of the front door with a line, was that you're saying?
No.
Oh, oh.
Door, the top of the, uh.
Yeah, the cover of the front door, that's what I mean, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
That's the alternative to the one we're looking at on here, you're saying, fifteen foot.
Three feet, okay.
Three feet, okay. That's a standard.
Right. Okay.
Would you please see that?
Yeah, I want you to see it. Okay, so why don't we open this to the public? Anyone would like to get up and have any questions, or for the applicant? Yeah, yeah, thank you. And just, please, again, just introduce yourself, and use the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph DeSalvo. I'm a partner in the firm Nobele, McGarian, and DeSalvo. We are at 111 Craft Avenue in Bronxville. We have been there for thirty-four years this month. We practice above People's United Bank, that's where our offices are located. And it's my pleasure to be here tonight, on behalf of my clients, James Maxheimer and his wife Andrea Maxheimer. They are sitting behind each other, we're trying to maintain some social distance and still see Mr. Kenny. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The applicants have nearly a half acre of land, twice as large as the Maxheimer property, and they want to build in an area that the village has decided should be vacant, a setback. The building inspector rightly denied their application, and you are being asked tonight to allow it. You must consider, under Village Law 7-712B, the benefit to the applicants as weight against the detriment to the neighborhood and the community. My client's submissions to the board make clear that every time they leave what they use as the main entrance for their house, which is in the addition on the back, on the driveway, every time they leave that house and open the door, they're going to see the back end of a garage that's six-point-one feet from their property line. The fence that's there is not a solid fence. The fence is six feet, and the garage will be fifteen-ten, or, in the alternative, twelve-eleven and three-quarters, above the fence. It's in an area that should be fifteen feet of clearance for my clients. They rightly perceive that the house next door lies mostly on the southern part of its lot, and that the proposed garage will concentrate even more development on the southern part of the lot, crowding the narrow, narrow parcel next door. James and Andrea have told me that if you grant this variance, and if it is not reversed by a court Article 78 proceeding, that they will move. That's how seriously they take this. And that you have to weigh the benefit to the applicants against the detriment to my clients. And what is that benefit? Is the benefit, for example, an additional bedroom for an ailing relative? No. The benefit is to park a car. We have heard tonight at length the architectural reasons and the integrity of, of the motor court, and the beauty of what it does to this structure. And I'll, I'll grant Mr. Kenny, I have a lot of respect for him, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful depiction. But is that a benefit that should justify your allowing them to build nine feet into a setback? It may be beautiful, but it doesn't belong there. Let's talk about Village Law 7-712. Aside from the basic test of weighing their benefit against the detriment to the neighborhood and the community, the law sets forth five factors for you to consider. I'm sure you've, you do this every month, but I'll take you through it somewhat briefly. First, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. There's two different components to part one. The character of the neighborhood, my client describes in great detail in the lengthy submissions he has made to this board, and I ask you, please, to accept all his submissions as part of tonight's record. They have been posted on your website, I appreciate that, and I ask that they be taken in as part of the record tonight. I adopt them as part of my presentation. One thing that was not discussed was what I perceive in my reading of your code, that says, that I think establishes its village policy to prohibit parking and garages in front yards. Zoning Code 310-22D and 310-10D5 are the relevant sections. First, let's talk about 22D. Parking spaces or parking areas with the exception of driveways shall not be permitted within front yards in any residential district in the village. And for purposes of this section, the portion of any driveway excluding the twenty feet immediately in front of the garage that is wider than twelve feet shall be considered to be part of a parking area. The area in front of the garage in today's application is approximately thirty by thirty-eight. That does not comply with 310-22D. 310-10D5, which governs District A, where this house is located, states as follows. In addition to complying with all other provisions of this chapter, no accessory building shall project nearer to the street on which the principal building fronts than such principal building. Except that, should topographical, and then it goes on to talk about different slopes, and the exception for garages that the planning board can give. That's not being sought here? And I think it's clear, however, under the code definition for accessory building, that this garage is an accessory building. Accessory building is defined in 310-3 as a building whose use is related, but not incidental or subordinate, to that of the primary building on the lot. Accessory buildings include, but are not limited to, and it lists a number of things, garden houses, et cetera, to include a private garage. The ten-by-fourteen connector in the plans don't make this garage an addition to the house. There is no common wall, it's a detached garage. Where do, where do we get the standard for common wall? The code for Section AAA, it's the one part of the code that defines a detached garage. If you look at AAA, it says, it allows detached garages, and then it has a parentheses. That is, garages that do not share at least one common wall with a dwelling. In the applicant's plan, if you open the door from their garage into the next room, it's not the main house, it's this attachment. If you're driving down White Plains Road and you look at this garage, you're not going to know that it's attached to the house. From most of the angles as you go down the road, it's going to appear as if it's an attached garage in the front yard. And if that's the case, and, and I, and I do think that the ten-by-fourteen connector does not transform this into a complying structure that's in addition to the house. It's, if, if, if that's the interpretation of the code, it's a workaround around an established policy, and I think it violates the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law is not to have parking in the front, it's not to have garages in the front. And some of the alternatives that they talked about would be more appropriate, putting the garage in the back. And the hierarchy of garages, which is talked about in my client's papers, you want a garage that's recessed, you want a garage that does not have doors that face forward, et cetera. And although this one has doors that do not face forward, it's right in the front yard. Because parking in the front yard and building a garage in the front yard are prescribed, to do so clearly would be a significant change in the character of the neighborhood that would be contrary to the established policy of the village, and therefore undesirable. If it's undesirable, then the application, applicant does not meet the first of these added considerations to Village Law 7-712B. But there's a second part, and that second part is whether the variance would be a detriment to nearby properties. The impact of this grand entrance to a large house on the smaller, narrower lot next door is significant. My client's written submissions make clear that the applicant's nine-foot encroachment into the fifteen-foot setback area would be a detriment to their property. I call your attention to page twenty-four of my client's submission. In that, you'll see the view from their family room. It's the top-right picture. In there, you see the semi-solid fence, you see the front door of the house next door. Just imagine a fifteen-foot, ten-inch garage there as well. That's what they look out at, and it would be that close to them. 7-712B has a second criterion for these added considerations, and that is whether the benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Well, this proposal already blocks the south wing, first floor of this house, and if you move it out of the setback, you're going to be blocking the front door. So this one, you, you can't do too much with this, other than build in the, in the forbidden area. However, they have given other alternatives, including the one in the detached garage, where if they can move it a few inches, it would require no variance. There may be a challenge to the drainage, all solvable issues. And in theory, you can remove some of the existing, what Mr. Kenny called the parking lot, in the back of, of the house, because you'll have it concentrated in one area, you need not have that massive area in the northwest corner. However, if I heard Mr. Kenny correctly, what he said to that alternative was, it does not work for the lifestyle of my clients. I think you have to weigh the benefit to the lifestyle of the applicants against the detriment to my clients and their perception of this crowding. Number three, under 7-712B, whether the requested area variance is substantial. I think it's clear that nine feet into a fifteen-foot setback is substantial. It represents a sixty percent incursion. It covers more of the setback than it leaves open. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. If this, if my reading of the code is correct, this violates a village policy. If the variance is granted, you can anticipate others would ask for the same relief. That could have a detriment on the neighborhood. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. This clearly is self-created because they're choosing to put it here, and we ask this board to deny this application as being self-created. They could have chosen to put it somewhere else. There are work, workable things. My clients have told me they will not oppose what they set forth as options two, three, or four. or four. And in addition, my clients have suggested a few other options, such as making a north wing to match the south wing and taking out the sunroom in the existing garage that has the difficulty in building on that side of the house, for example. In conclusion, we ask the zoning board of appeals to consider the factors set forth in village law 7-712B and to conclude that the detriment to the neighborhood and the community, including James and Andrea Maxheimer, outweighs whatever benefit would accrue to applicants if they were allowed to substantially encroach into the vacant setback area. With your permission, I'd like to have a second to turn around and ask my client if he has any points he wants me to make. May I do that?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Sure.
We have two other submissions, they're only two pages each. May I have them?
Sure. These are additions, she's not know how we do this, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me ask, are there any other questions, comments from the, from the public? And let me ask my fellow board members, do you have any more questions? Jim, anything we need to touch on or that you?
I think once you're finished with the presentations of the public, if you're not expecting to add more, you may not know that you have to have your own discussion. If you're not expecting to take in any more testimony or evidence either now or at future meetings, then you'll be in a position to close the public hearing. You may not know that until you have your own discussion.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm just, if, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
We're good. So, I, if no other questions, and I think, let me propose a, a resolution that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant to the residents of 115 West, sorry, White Plains Road, a variance from Section 310-10D2, requiring a 15-foot setback. Proposed setback is 6.1 feet. Applicant is requesting an 8.91 variance. So, I'm going to start with you, Mary Ellen. What are your thoughts, what are your thoughts on this?
I, I think, looking at the plans, I actually do applaud the look and the addition of green space. I think that will do a lot, given the water issues we do have in our village, I think that will be helpful. I think it's a challenge, Bronxville's always been a challenge, it's a small, tight community, so it's hard to sometimes fit things in where we want them. So, given that there are some other alternatives that could work and may not be ideal, just given the footprint and the traffic of how the house is set up, but do meet the setback requirements, I would deny this request.
Right, thank you. Janie, your thoughts?
I have to say, I agree with everything Mary Ellen said, I think it's a beautiful job and a beautiful rendering, and I can see how you kept it in keeping with all the rest of the house and the design, but it is a substantial setback requirement, and to have six feet, and it's towering higher over your neighbors as well, and when you have such a big piece of property, it doesn't seem that it's the only place we can do this, and I'm sorry, I also agree, I'm going to have to deny the.
Great, thank you. John?
I want to commend Mr. Kenny for his presentation and his, all the work he's done with this, but I go along with my, I concur with my colleagues and I deny the application.
Okay. Greg?
I also deny it.
Okay. Well, that leaves me, and I agree with my colleagues, and I think, again, if you look at the factors, we've spoken about those, there are alternatives, it is a significant variance being requested, therefore, the variance has been turned down. Therefore, this, Jim?
So, I think it's right in order for you to direct me to draft a decision for you and keep you with what your deliberation tonight, and that's submitted to you for consideration and, and.
Perfect.
Direct for you with option and subsequent, the applicant knows what you're doing.
Right, okay, good.
So, I think that could just provide a vital consensus, if you would like to direct a decision and keep you with your discussion just now, or do that.
Right, right. I mean, we normally do that, but I think if you would, you know, draft that, I think that would be helpful, because Christina is not here.
Yeah.
And she often drafts that for us, so that would be a big help. Thank, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for coming, that adjourns the meeting.